So it's February 11, 2021 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to call to order. Our committee of the whole meeting for this evening is permitted by Governor Pritzker's executive orders 2020-07 and 2020-33. The Oak Park River Forest High School Board of Education in Cook County, Illinois is convening a remote committee of the whole meeting. Via Zoom and also live streamed. Board members, citizens and staff may participate in the meeting with the information under the virtual location section on our website. The state of Illinois continues to operate under disaster declaration related to the COVID-19 worldwide pandemic. The health department continues to advise the community to practice social distancing, wear face masks and avoid unnecessary contact with others. Based on the current public health concerns, I, Sarah Spivey, as head of the public body, do not believe it is either practical or prudent to hold an in-person meeting of the Board of Education tonight. I further believe that it is neither practical nor prudent for the public to be present at our regular meeting location. We will continue to hold a remote meeting with updated practices to comply with Public Act 101-640 that was signed by Governor Pritzker on June 12, 2020. However, I would like to state that we will be resuming in-person board meetings if the COVID numbers continue to hold. At our next scheduled regular board meeting, logistics of which are still being worked out at this time. Those who prefer to remain remote may do so, but those who would like to be in person, we will make appropriate accommodations to ensure social distancing, temperature checks, all the regular COVID protocols for those willing and able to participate in person. So those details for the public will be forthcoming before that next board meeting. Gil, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Dr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
Here.
Mr. Isley? He could be a little late. Mr. Martyri?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Ms. Dixon Spivey.
Sorry, I'm muted. I'm here. Do we have any visitor comments this evening?
We do. We have one. And that is from Monica Shiyan, who says, "Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to make a public comment this evening, and I request an email reply to the raised questions within two weeks in accordance with board protocol. First, according to Agenda Item 5D, renovations of 50% of the classrooms in Project One remain on hold." Question one. According to the financial reports, District 200 has an extra $20 million earmarked for facility improvements that it's reserving for Project Two, which includes an oversized swimming pool and a 600-seat auditorium. Why is this money not being used now to renovate all of the 38 classrooms on hold in Project One? Since the district has the money, why delay these academic facility improvements? Question two. Did District 200 experience a budget surplus due to the pandemic? If yes, what is the amount of the surplus and will the District 200 return this money to taxpayers? Thank you. And that's it.
All right. Thank you for that, Gil. All right, so. I move to approve the January 14, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes are approved. Next, we are on to our finance section.
Thank you. So the first item is the Northern Illinois Independent Purchasing Cooperative rollovers. This is an item for discussion. Making the presentation is Ms. Shaleen Pakowski, Director of Food Service. At the conclusion of her presentation, she will ask that the committee of the whole move this item forward to the Board of Education meeting scheduled for February 25th for approval. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and District Policy Four colon 60. Ms. Shaleen?
Thank you. We are looking to roll over all of our bids for the 2021-22 school year. If you go down the list, it's our direct-to-manufacture bids, our vending bid, our beverage company bid, our dairy bid, and our bread bid, and then our main distributor bid. Are there any questions?
Questions from any board members? I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the Property Casualty and Workers' Compensation Insurance, RFP. This too is an item for discussion. Making the presentation tonight is Ms. Cindy Sador, Chief Financial Officer, Carol and Gus, Director of Purchasing and Transportation, Dr. Robert Grossi, Consultant. And from Alliance, we have Patrick Sheehan, Dane Maul and Kathy Salinas. At the conclusion of this presentation, it is recommended that the that the services be awarded the RFP for Property Casual Workers' Compensation Insurance, which will include student accident and fiduciary liability for fiscal years '22, '23 and '24, and a flat annual fee of not to exceed $37,500, with an option to renew for a fourth and fifth year, and that this item be moved forward to the regular Board of Education meeting for approval at its February 25, 2021 meeting. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and District Policy Four colon 60. Ms. Sador?
Thank you, Dr. Prudential Adams. Good evening, everyone. Back in October, we had sent out, we posted an RFP for the Property Casualty and Workers' Compensation. This agreement, as Dr. Prudential Adams had said, is for a three-year with an extension of possibly four in the fifth year. A committee was formed with eight members, seven from the district and one consultant, who is Dr. Ross Grossi. We received two bids. We compared fees with the three brokers, and that included the two who submitted the RFP plus our current broker. The Alliance was the lowest bidder. We listed the reasons for the recommendations. We're listed on our board cover. Alliance was picked unanimously by this committee to recommend to the board. And with that, I'm going to introduce Patrick Sheehan. He is the Senior Vice President with Alliance Insurance Services Incorporated. They will give you a small presentation and then answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there something to be projected on the screen? Okay, do we have that?
It's in the agenda.
Okay, there's someone, I'm just saying, is someone going to project it on the screen?
I see. Hugo, can you move Mr. Sheehan over from attendees into panelists, please? Hi, Patrick Sheehan here.
Yeah.
First, oh, here we go. Thank you. Sorry about. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes. Yeah. Are we, my question was though, is there a presentation that needs to be projected?
No. It was, it should be in the packet.
Which one is it? Oh, I'm in the wrong one. Hold on. Which one is it?
It says presentation.
Yeah. Second one, second one.
Perfect.
Great. Well, thank you, Cindy. And thank you, board members, for the opportunity to today. Appreciate the consideration. And as Cindy mentioned, we met with the two weeks ago to present our full conventions and outline our experience servicing K through 12 school districts throughout Illinois. Today, we are going to provide a more condensed version of the full presentation. We gave it the last opinion. But we're also here to answer any questions that you have, so please stop us at any time. With me today is Kathy Salinas and Dane Maul. And if we're approved as your risk management broker, the three of us would be our contacts insurance-related. If we flip to the next slide, I'm going to give a brief overview of Alliance Insurance and our public entity and education experience. Kathy will go into a little more detail on insurance coverage, our team structure, as well as our marketing approach. And Dane will give a very brief overview of the loss control resources. So on page, the following page, you'll see a brief overview of Alliance. We're one of the largest insurance brokers nationwide. We're number nine. We have over 4,000 employees, 110 of nationwide. Our Chicago office, which was formerly Mezzero, is the largest single. The following page provides a little more detail on our public entity and education practice, which is the largest in the country. And you'll see we have more than 300 dedicated practice. Locally, both Kathy and I lead this practice within a public sector group. And on the following slide you're looking at right now, you'll see a sample listing of our K through school clients. I think the takeaway here is you'll see that we work with a lot of larger school districts in the state. Public schools, Elgin School District, Indian Prairie. We also have a lot of experience working with local high school districts. And then you'll also see a lot of local school surrounding area clients are, including District 89, Riverside Brook, Morton, and Cicero School. And then the next page gives you a little bit more detail on our public.
You're breaking up a little bit. I didn't, I don't know if you know that you're breaking up just a tad.
I'm breaking up.
Yeah, I don't know if it's where you are in regards to your speaker, but you were breaking up and I don't know. I just got a text asking, were you breaking up to everyone? There, that's better, right there.
May I suggest, we found this last night at another meeting, that if people turn off their video, the audio is much better for the person who's speaking. So maybe we could do that. Try and see if that worked.
Do you mean for the person speaking to turn off their own video or for all of us?
All of, well, for some of us anyway, to turn off our video.
Okay.
Gina was instrumental in that yesterday.
Okay, if you could go back one slide.
Hold on, I'm navigating here.
Okay.
This one?
Yes. Actually, if you could go back one more. You know, if you read through the board report, as Cindy mentioned, you know, we do have significant experience transitioning districts away from pools and into the conventional marketplace or into other pools. So most, many of these districts, you'd say, have been in other pool, including the pool that you're currently part of. So I just wanted to stress that. And if you flip to the following page, you'll see a summary of some of our Illinois public entity clients. State of Illinois, City of Chicago, Cook County, Chicago Transit Authority, PACE. They also service many of the surrounding villages, including Oak Park, which I personally service myself. And the reason I mention these accounts is many of the same carriers that write publicities also write school districts all throughout the state of Illinois. So we place millions of dollars into the marketplace on an annual basis. And with that, that provides us leverage, and we have great relationships with these carriers, which we pass on to our clients. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Kathy, who's going to give a little bit more detail about the coverages, our marketing efforts, and some of the carriers will.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, board members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. If you would go to the slide six, please. These next two slides, six and seven, provide a good summary and a visual of the exposures that the district faces, as well as insurance coverages that are available in the marketplace. Six is an overview of liability and then seven, overview of property. If we're selected as your broker, it's our job to protect you for these exposures and then to service your risk management needs throughout the year. The next slide, eight, if you wouldn't mind, thank, perfect, thank you. This is our team structure. So we set up our team to best respond to our school district clients. Patrick and I would be your main contacts on a daily basis, but we have specialists in every area. Specialists like Dane Maul, who's on the call tonight, our loss control rep. We have a cyber specialist on staff at Alliance. If the district were to have a large property claim, we have a property claim expert on staff that would help walk you through that claim process. Additionally, if you were to have a school board legal claim or a lawsuit filed against the district, we have our own attorney on staff, and they would work with you and help you through that claim filing process. They often will work closely with your attorneys, just as an additional resource for that legal liability claim. The following slide, slide nine, summarizes our Alliance culture and our commitment to diversity and inclusion. The next slide, slide 10, is a summary of the carriers that we would approach on behalf of the district. This is a comprehensive list of carriers that are in the education space, but it'll typically come down to three or four carriers or programs that are going to be the most competitive. If we're selected as your broker, we're prepared to immediately begin the marketing process. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dane Maul, and he's going to talk briefly about our loss control resources.
Thank you, Kathy. If I could see the next slide, that would be fantastic. On loss control. So my name is Dane Maul, and my role at Alliance Public Entity is that of a loss control consultant, although I do wear a fair number of hats here within our public entity team. My background allows me to kind of touch a lot of different areas of the risk management process. My past, I was fortunate enough to be a risk manager for large counties and municipalities and insurance pools here in the state of Illinois. And through that background, been able to manage the risk for thousands of employees, the claims that are filtered through, whether those be workers' compensation, property liability, overseeing all aspects of a comprehensive risk management program. And so my job really is very much a boots-on-the-ground approach to help the district receive the loss control resources and services that you need, whether that be in pipes bursting, as we were talking about before the meeting, or it could be liability issues or employee injuries. We have a very deep bench at Alliance with myself, like I said, being boots on the ground, but then also others in our Chicago office and then around the country. We have a strong portal of resources that we provide, setting up service plans that are individually catered to each one of our clients. And that is, that is one that is based on what your needs are, what your total cost of risk is from a loss standpoint and an exposure standpoint. Next slide, please. You know, we recognize, and I do certainly, that, you know, managing risk is competing against a lot of different priorities in school districts. And, but we've also seen, and especially with some of the events of the last year, how quickly risk management becomes very much a part of every single thing that we do to manage our public entities and our school districts with the pandemic, and how quickly we needed to pivot to respond to those things. And that's where we are at as Alliance to help you pivot and provide you the resources you need to respond. So with that, I will toss this back to Patrick or?
Thanks, Dane. And yeah, just the last slide is, you know, just a sample timeline. If we were selected to move forward, this just gives the board and the administration sample timeline how that would look. We do have familiarity with the district, voted you last year for the workers' compensation. So the good news is, is we're ready to hit the ground running, selected. And we think we could turn options for it for the next 40, 60 days. So with that, I'll open up the questions.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. Board members, questions?
Tara?
Yep, I see your mic is open, Tom.
My mic is open. I have two questions. The first one is actually probably more for Cindy, and then I have one for the Alliance group, which is, you know, when we discussed this previously, there was, you know, concern or issues with a, I don't know what it's called, a rebate that's associated with the pool. Can you re-acclimate us with what that discussion was and how it fits into this year's analysis?
Well, with the, use rebate, I think they call it a dividend. And with the dividend, what they do is they, there's a pool of money that after so many years, you sort of build up this, I would guess, a little pot of money that there is a board out click that they decide whether they want to go ahead and issue money back to the district. And it's not the whole thing. It's if they, if they have an excess in there. Or the other is to reduce rates. The third one is to say that they're going to save it, so when rates are higher, they could try and go ahead and lower it. If you leave click, what happens with that is you lose that money. So it's not like tangible where they would send you a check for the money that you had built up in it. That is an amount that would be lost. Looking at last year, we had our lowest, the highest year had fallen off. So we were really thinking that we were going to see a big decrease in our workers' comp, which we did now. So sort of this was going through every, you know, going through each one. We interviewed everybody too, the two brokers, and also to brought on a consultant, Dr. Grossi, and discussed this with him about how this actually all works. So that was the difference that was from last year to this year.
So I guess, can you just clarify, what's, what, what conclusion did you come to? Because last year, that was a determinant in staying where we were. And this, in this year, the decision is to, is to move to Alliance. So what is it that changed in that assessment, please?
What changed in the assessment was the fact that the workers' comp was $70,000 higher than Alliance had been from last year. So if we were actually with Alliance for two years, we would have had a savings. So moving forward, it makes sense to actually go with Alliance for this.
Okay. Okay, thank you. My second question more for the Alliance group is, as you begin, if you, when you begin the work of soliciting among your, you know, the insurers, what can you tell us is the current market climate, both in the property and workers' comp arena?
Sure, I'll start and then Dane, if you want to jump in. I mean, undoubtedly, we are in a hard marketplace where we're seeing rate increases 10 to 15 to 20% or higher, particularly on our property placements. But for school districts, I would say that that range is a little bit lower. You know, I've mentioned that slide here about the premium that we place in the marketplace on an annual basis. The leverage that we place, the relationships that we have with carriers, I think helps you during this process. I mean, just yesterday, we had a two-hour meeting with Liberty Mutual. The first thing they asked is the status of this RFP. So they're eager to write your account. There's another pool out there called, Don't Like Company Risk and Trust. They're eager to write your account. We're typically seeing five to 10% rate increases from ICRT. IPRF is the workers' compensation care that we quoted last year. They're eager to write your account, and they're the ones that Cindy mentioned. You know, they gave it a figure that was 70 to 75 dollars less than your current bidder. So overall, it is a hard marketplace, but I do think there's a lot of opportunity, a lot of carriers that are looking to write your account. As Kathy mentioned, you know, we did give a very comprehensive list. It typically comes out of three or four carriers that are very competitive or competitive. So while we will go onto the entire market, in all likelihood, we'll come back, you know, a month or two with three or four options. And I think the other thing to point out too, that it's very important, is the options that we are going to provide do not exclude COVID coverage on the general liability, which I believe under your current program, it's not only excluded under property, but it is excluded under liability. So I think that it's one of, and if you read through Cindy's presentation, you know, she referenced that as well. Dane and Kathy, do you want to add anything?
No, I was just going to add that it's real significant that we have multiple markets that are not excluding COVID.
And I also just want to make a comment. Is what this year, as a challenging year for insurance placement, as Patrick mentioned, we call that a hard market in the insurance marketplace. And really what it does is, when we talk about the things that happen around us, happen globally, happen around the nation, this, these types of events that we've seen with pandemics and with civil unrest and sexual abuse molestation cases and things like that, when we start seeing those things erupt more in the news, we hear more about wildfires and we hear more about hurricanes, it's hard for us sometimes to see how that relates to us in our area of the world. But what we are seeing in this hard marketplace is that it actually does, and it impedes our, the marketplace's ability to find insurance solutions. But the good news is, is that relationships matter and access to marketplaces matter, and having the flexibility to get out in the marketplace and market our clients is the difference, is the difference maker. So we're connecting the dots here and making sure that, you know, yes, these events are occurring. It's a hard marketplace, but we still need to be pressuring and negotiating just as we would any given year.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Thanks, Tom. Any other board members have questions? All right, I see none. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we will be bringing this back in two weeks.
The next item is Bid Package Six, Electrical Rebid. Making, this item is for discussion. Making this presentation is Mr. Ronald Anderson, Executive Director of Operations, Mr. Mike Karioschel, Consultant, Mr. Josh Shurniak, Mr. Josh Warner, and Ms. Allison Stenquist. At the conclusion of this presentation, we would ask to move this item forward to the board meeting on the 25th of February, approving the total cost of bid period six and a total cost of $7,900,000. approving the the total cost of bid period six and a total cost of seven million nine hundred twenty one thousand four hundred ninety nine dollars. And they also will be asking the board at that time to approve the transfer of seven hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety three dollars of out of the budget into the health life safety budget and five hundred thousand to project one budget. And so this with the administration will propose the approval of the bid package six, electrical bid and alternative five and six D for the twenty one twenty three construction for eight million five hundred and twenty nine dollars, thousand two hundred and eighty six dollars. This is in compliance with strategic plan priority four and district policy four colon one fifty. Mr. Anderson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let me view my screen. Let me share my screen. So this is, we we made sure that we we had the options to bring this back to the board so the board could discuss and make some 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 conscious decisions on which way you want to go. So some of the numbers before they go to the board, the board to the board, meaning we have to change changes well, it came in a little bit different than the ones we see. And Josh caught the the numbers. So we'll explain those as we go. On Friday's February second, Pepper Construction opened the bids for a result of the appearance six, the rebid. Also included eighteen A, eighteen B, the scope of the construction work associated with twenty one to twenty three capital improvement projects. The balance of project one, the fire alarm, the master clock system, the intercom system and health and life safety work. The total cost of the B appears six was seven million nine twenty one thousand and four hundred ninety nine dollars. The total cost will increase depending on which alternates that we accept. The you have alternate five, which is balcony extension, also six A, six B, six C and six D. Alternate number five was actually five hundred forty seven thousand seven hundred fifty nine dollars. Also, six A, B and C are correct. And also number eight is actually five hundred fifteen thousand even. Also, six A, B and C were originally removed to ensure that the district had options if the business came back over budget. Following several operations, the stair committee meetings, we decided to make alternate five and six D alternates as well. Because that way the district had even more options if it wasn't favorable because we think the business were coming in over budget. Alternative five, the balcony extension is opportunity that we would need to complete as part of the commons area. Or it won't be done. The alternate five will have a positive impact on equity for students by enhancing the second floor common space to accommodate the students after hours and education benefit for providing breakout space during during the day. We also, we also will have that PowerPoint so that you could see the balcony area. At the at the B period six, the project one was under budget, four hundred four hundred fifty five thousand nine hundred twenty two dollars. The capital improvement budget was under budget by one million seven hundred forty two thousand two hundred four dollars. The health life safety was over budget by seven hundred sixteen thousand three hundred ninety three dollars. So we proposed that the health and life safety into alternates that we're discussing tonight be subtracted from the capital capital improvement budget, only only partially. The health and life safety negative balance can be can be covered through if you subtract the negative amount, it'd come out to one thousand twenty five thousand. I mean, sorry, one million twenty five thousand eight hundred eleven dollars. If you take that from the capital improvement budget. District has been approved to receive a five hundred thousand dollar grant from DECO, which is the Department of Economic, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. And it's guaranteed, we've been talking back before with the state and it's a guarantee, it's been earmarked to the district for the ADA elevator, which will be completed in the summer of twenty two. This would increase the capital improvement budget about five hundred thousand. So if we take five hundred thousand and move into the capital from the capital approval budget to project one, it increases the cap to, I mean, the project one budget by five hundred more thousand dollars. If ultimate alternate six D, the eight classrooms and alternate five, the balcony extension are added back to the project. We can transfer that amount into project one, which will have, which leave a balance of nine hundred twenty one thousand and twenty four dollars inside the capital improvement budget. This would allow us to beat out smaller projects within and not increase the fund balance while doing that. And we also, it won't affect now the FY twenty four capital improvement project because we removed it. We removed that amount from the budget and put it in twenty twenty four so that it wouldn't reflect because it was showing up a variance that was off a lot when we get will be showed in January. Here we have this one over. This is the logic behind. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. So with the executive summary for our part, the PowerPoint, we're under budget overall with the project. As I said, we had five hundred thousand dollar grant for the elevator. We have the proposed options is to take the five hundred thousand, not that five hundred thousand, but five hundred thousand dollar capital improvement and put it in inside of the the project one after receiving it, transfer funds from the capital improvement budget to shortfalls and health life safety, enable alternatives in part in in the project one, which this is actually in reverse, that that should be five hundred fifty one thousand, I mean, in inside of the project, inside of six D should actually be five hundred fifteen thousand and six, I mean, and five should be five hundred forty seven thousand. This is the this is the budget from January. And in this budget, we show numbers that they had a placeholder for the electrical before the electrical came in. Now, this is February after electrical came in. So you would see that the bid, the original bids, the became totals was thirty nine million, seven hundred forty six, eight thirteen for project one. We budgeted thirty six, thirty six, six thirty one, five hundred. We moved over from capital improvements for the basement and subgrade work. We moved that over, which gave us a updated budget of forty million. That left us a variance of three hundred forty one thousand. I'm calculating going straight down. That left us a variance of three hundred forty one thousand, seven twelve. Plus, we had a hundred and fourteen thousand in credits from the summer work, which gave us the updated variance of four hundred fifty five thousand nine twenty two. Now, if you, if we move over the five hundred thousand that we proposed, that would increase the the project one by five hundred, I mean, by five hundred thousand, which would be nine hundred fifty five thousand nine twenty two. If we accept the alternates of the six D and five, we will be over slightly over budget. And if that's funded by that is funded by the capital improvements, that will put it at a zero, zero variance and it zeroed out. You're leaving us with a positive fund balance inside of capital improvements. And you can see inside of the health and life safety column, we took the 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 negative, negative balance. You see it there and we took it from here, capital improvements and put it here and help my safety, which was zero out that that one as well. So what we try to do is here is give you a side by side view of what we presented in January in contrast to what we what we got actually in February. So as you can see, in January, we had the estimated total of thirty nine million nine nine seven. The actual bits after the electrical came in a little bit, a little bit lower than I mean, seven forty six. And these numbers, everything that's white stayed the same. The variance went from ninety thousand to three hundred forty, three hundred forty one thousand. Anticipated summer project credit, we anticipated it's going to be one eighteen, but it actually came out to one fourteen. Anticipated variance went from two hundred and eight to four fifty five. And these are the proposed transfers that I spoke about just a second ago. Over in over in Captain Probit, you can see that we, the red is just the subtraction from the basement from Captain Probit over to the project one. Six forty two. Actually, this is, this is where, and don't forget, we subtracted the, we subtracted the the four million that was that's going to be inside of that's for the FY twenty four budget. We subtracted that out of out of here. So once you took that out, you don't have that six million surplus because now that's in FY, in FY twenty four. So it wouldn't be confusing with the with the big gap in how much we had left over. That would give us a variance of one point seven. And this is, this is subtracting the health life safety shortfall. This is this is getting getting the five hundred thousand and minus the five hundred thousand and putting it into project one. Helping like safety. You'll see, you see the, you see the bids, estimated, the estimated cost. This is updated bid, it came at five, five point nine. This is where we had, this is where we had over checked that spoke about. So you have the, on all we could write, you got to change reason. The updated bids, if you see in yellow, you see we removed the twenty twenty four from the budget. That's why, that's why it's on this line right here. You have the updated total after we removed it. And we got the variance from the updated two district two hundred budget here. Once you minus, once you minus the time to what the bid actually came at, came in at, that's how you get to one point seven. Little confusing when you have all these numbers at the same time. So we have all the proposals. And this is where the board come in at and tell us exactly where if we had if you had other thoughts on how you wanted us to shift it around without that, from the operations committee meetings and from the stair committee meeting, we, we, we spoke about it and and we want to bring the best options that we thought was good, but we also wanted to have your feedback on how you felt you wanted to make changes.
Ron, would you like me to to share the video to just refresh everybody's memory of what the balcony extension that we're talking about is this alternate is?
Got it.
Great.
This is, this is the balcony extension. As you can see, we created, we created an area for a couple of classrooms that could be up at the same time. And also on the wall, you have a, you have a smart wall with a projection and whiteboard.
So this, this space that you're seeing would be an infill in the existing opening for this space where you see the opening here, this would be infilled to create additional space for students to congregate after hours in the, when we're able to now open this entire commons area up to students. And it also can be used during the day as a breakout space for teaching. It can accommodate approximately one classroom in this space. It can also be used during during the day by students as lounge areas, getting together for group discussions, et cetera.
That's just a, so the area with the carpeting, the sort of brown.
Yes.
Abstract carpeting. This is the, this would be the new area, right? That's
That would be, yes, yeah. So you can see the existing columns and the line of the existing terrazzo. And this is what we would be building out to add on to create to buy, buy more, more space for students.
Where did that come from?
I'm sorry?
Yeah. Where did this idea come from? Was this ever, was this part of, this was not part of the original scope, right?
This was, um.
We always, I'm sorry, we always talked about extending the balcony. That was a part of the the original presentation from the imagine room.
And we did present this, this, this presentation that Ronnie's showing. We presented, I believe that was the December board meeting when we walked through the final design of these final areas that the board hadn't yet seen. So we put it in as an alternate, not knowing where the cost would come in at. It actually came in significantly better than we had thought it would. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of what this space is that we're talking about.
I have a question.
Tara, can I? Go ahead.
I think I heard Matt first and then Craig.
Yeah, Craig would like to go.
Yeah, real quick, this is just like a, just a pass through space. If we don't do this, I'm just trying to understand what would be there if we don't go for this particular option.
What you can see is, yes, it's essentially, it's a corridor right now with the, on the other side. There's a little bit of extension where we are showing putting some tables, but it would be significantly, it would house significantly fewer students and it would not be able to use the use for it as a breakout space to use during the day for teaching or group work would not be available. That really wouldn't be available if we don't do this.
Okay. And in a way, this is a hybrid of a of an additional classroom.
Sort of, yeah, it could, it would not be used as a dedicated classroom, but it would be able, available to anybody to reserve.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go? Yeah, so we'll come back. I I guess just since we're on the balcony, is this a space we need? Or is this a space that we would like to have because it's nice?
It was a space that based upon the focus groups that were done with the students, it would give them a place when an additional space at the end of the day, when they're usually being rushed out, that they could go and be and also some of them, particularly juniors and seniors have lunch there. So that's how it evolved. And then it turned into also being able to use it as additional instructional space.
So i- isn't the, you know, in the new commons, isn't the learning stair? Aren't the upstairs areas, aren't all of those areas all basically the same justification?
Yes.
So this is in addition to those.
I I don't say addition because it was a part of the original plan.
Yeah, I guess I don't remember it being in the original plan, but I'll, I'll trust you.
Yeah, we talked about the gallery multiple times and the the learning, the book from the original facade down below there and opening up that whole area downstairs as well.
Okay. Let me back up. Ron, can you put up your budget numbers? Please?
Which one you want to side by side or you want?
Yeah, so that's a, that page is fine. So the bid totals in for project one are thirty nine point seven or thirty six point six, depending on whether we keep the basement in or not, right?
The basement is already in.
It's in the thirty nine, right? I I guess my question is, and my logic is this. We we created these alternates or we created, we had a long discussion at a board meeting We, we created these alternates or we created, we, we had a long discussion at a board meeting about what we needed to take out of the scope because the original budget for the project was thirty-two point four million dollars, if I recall. And it expanded to, on the same basis, without the basement to thirty-six point three, which we allowed the budget to expand to because there are things that we felt were, were critical. Now the logic is because we hit the thirty-six or we're slightly under the thirty-six that we should spend some more money, we should spend that underage of the over budget to put these alternatives in. Is that, that how I understand this?
No, we removed those, those last two alternates because we were, we were thinking that we may come in over budget. So we put out, we took those out in, I think, January.
Yeah, I, I, I think, Ron, the point I'm trying to make is that your current January budget is four million dollars over the original scope already. And, and whether you come in under that or not, w- we're still over what we originally committed to.
I, I agree with you on that, but I need to take the board back to when we were first asking the board to approve the Imagine project. And one of the things we kept cautioning against is setting specific cost factors because, you know, that was what, two and a half years ago? And moving forward, we could not really get a good gauge on what the cost would be. But what you're saying is correct because now we're at that point that it was over. But that was one of the, the downsides, I guess, of putting a specific, uh, amount on the project versus putting a range on the project at the onset.
Yeah, so I, I understand that and I, I agree with you and I agree with it that that was a risk and that was not, um, because the scope is fuzzy. But, but I guess what I want to caution is, is while I appreciate all the, all the looking around in the budget for, for this, you know, really, if we want to invest in these alternatives, let's just do it. If we don't, let's just not. Let's not fool ourselves about being over budget or under budget. I think that's a kind of a silly argument. So I, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, if we like, if we like these things and we think that they add to the education and they're needed, let's do them. If not, let, let's not and let's not kid ourselves about this budget. I'm done, Sarah. Thanks.
Thank you, Craig. Others?
Yes, Sarah?
Yep, Tom, go for it.
So I, I have, I have some comments and then I have a couple of questions, okay? My comments, Ron, you made a statement. This is a little confusing when you have all these, um, numbers at the same time. I'm gonna disagree with you. I think it's a lot confusing, okay? Well beyond a little. And, you know, as we've continued to go through this process, you know, there's been kind of recurring questions about things and I've been reflecting on it to say, wait a second, what, what is, what's, what's causing me, me the, the, the challenge, okay? Um, and just as an, a, a perspective, I've been in, in my other job, I deal with multi-million dollar capital budgets and have for decades and have never kind of been, never been as confused as I continue to be. So I, it, it, it's not like this is new to me, um, but the confusion is new. So I've been reflecting on it and part of the challenge I think I have, which is reflected by the continued questions, has to do with in, in some ways what Craig talked about. It's, we have scope, which is the work, and then we have the dollars. And we kind of seem to, you know, and the, the scope, I, we're, I'm trying to continue to match, what are we getting for what we're spending? What do we get? You know, what did we originally say we were gonna get for what we spent? So it's, it's this ability to keep scope and dollars together because what's happening is we, we do these things, we call them alternates, right? Well, that, they were part of scope, but we, for a bidding purpose, have said, let's remove them, okay? Which, you know, they're part of scope, so some way we need to be able to represent that. So I, my point is, I, I am very confused, okay? It is confusing to me. What is, where the scope is because we move pieces around? And so I, I, you know, I think there are better ways of doing it, okay? But having it the way it's been and, and what I'm seeing here is, um, is not easy for me to follow, okay? So I, um, and, and I've been doing it. So if, if others on the board can, can weigh in and say, yep, it's Kowski, you're, you've lost your marbles and, um, we'll, we'll, we'll let you go. I'd like to, to hear that, but I do think we need to keep, as we go through, that we always have the scope and dollars matched together. And I think that's in some ways what Craig was just kind of talking about because we had an original scope that was X, but then we just changed the dogs. So that's my big picture comment. My question, go ahead.
This is, this is Josh. So obviously, anything construction wise, I can, I can do some kind of comparison for you. Wh- what specifically are you trying to compare? Because the only question is, obviously, you guys had a budget where it started at, which was basically, it was based off a thought, just an idea, you know, a little bit of a we have true contractor's cost, so I can't tell you what the original electrical number you guys had was. You apples to apples, but I could probably do a lot more to help you.
Josh, you're breaking up.
Sorry. Get him out, I can stop that, but.
Yeah, Tom, we can, we can go a long way to try to, to, uh, put a, put a presentation together that re- reiterates what was in the base bid and matches that scope of the base bid to the dollars that are being presented. And, uh, your point is well taken about the alternates. I think the intention was to present those alternates in a way where the board had some choice and some option whether to accept them or not. Uh, the good news is, if you look at the base bid, the way it was constructed and the way the bid came in, I mean, the good news is we're almost, almost a half a million dollars under budget uh, in the Project One area. So the, part of the dilemma is you've got three buckets of money here, one being the Project One bucket, the second being the capital improvement bucket, and the third being health, life, safety. So, uh, that's part of the confusion. We'll, we'll go back to the drawing board and try to, uh, work it up so it's simpler to understand. Um, may, maybe break each, each apart separately before we start combining them together, but uh, I, I hear you. I hear you loud and clear. We, we, if you have any suggestions on how we might make it clearer, we'd be very happy to entertain those.
I will give you my thoughts. Just, and I mean, it, 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 the key to it is, is somehow or other keeping scope and dollars aligned. So we'll leave it at that and I can carry that offline, okay?
Okay, we can do that, thank you.
Let me ask you, my, my one question before C is, what is it, so, so, so just in looking at the bid totals on the sheet there, so you froze it on the right sheet, you know, it looks, what is in, um, health, life and safety that has, that, that we think has pushed that one over budget, whereas the other areas seem to be in a different condition?
So this is Josh again. I apologize if you can't hear me if I'm breaking up at home, but, uh, I mean, the big scope in health and life safety is we're, we're literally in your entire million square foot school and fieldhouse, replacing all fire alarm, all intercom, all clock, master clock system. So, I mean, the thought is, I don't know when exactly that budget was done for health and life safety. I mean, there's escalation. There's just certain things that kind of build a life of themselves. I, I can't speak to exactly what it, what it, but I mean, it's a big scope. It's, it's however many years later from whenever, I already said, I, I, I wasn't involved in the original budgeting of it, but it's a big scope and and that's the only thing I can kind of chalk that up, that up to.
The original, the original timeframe was twenty seventeen when it was put together. And it was estimated at that point roughly five point one and change, five point one million and change.
And this also includes escalation over, this work's gonna be completed over the course of three years. So there's some escalation that comes into factor in that.
In the current estimate.
In, in the current, in the bid, they are, the bidding is for work that will be done between, um, between now and, and the end of the project. So when you compare that the budget was set in twenty seventeen and the work will be completed by twenty twenty-three, there's increasing costs that come into, to play with escalation.
So if I'm hearing it correctly, because, you know, Josh said it's a big scope, the scope is identical to what was in the original budget. Is that, am I hearing the, the original?
Yes, the, the original budget was just based off a square foot though. You know, it's a million square foot school. I've actually bid a true design. Like I said, that, that's the one difference, I guess, if I'm gonna compare it to what the budget was arrived from. I mean, the, the budget arrived from, you know, just kind of, hey, we gotta replace the fire alarm. Historically, it's this amount of square foot, so let's carry it. Now we've truly bid it out. It's an actual true contractor doing the work. And then, like Allison said, in the years that it's actually going to be performed.
Thank you. I will yield.
Questions from others? Sorry, I can't really see everyone, so I don't know if folks want to just jump in. Gina? We can't hear you. There you go.
No?
No, now we can, yeah.
I actually was, I want to echo a little bit of what Tom said. Well, I do recall that original piece about the extension and I, I actually really feel quite supportive of that. Um, but I want to echo, one of the pieces that came up for me as I was reviewing the materials for this meeting was that I feel like every time the information is presented, it looks different. Um, and so that is, that is challenging. Um, that's, it's challenging because it looks different every time. Like we've seen different graphs, different charts and different, different, um, spreadsheets for the way the information is presented. And if we could just get that information in a consistent, um, in some, in a more consistent format, that would be, that would be extremely helpful. And I would like, um, in reading through the description and then in Mr. Anderson presenting the information tonight, there were pieces that definitely answered questions that I had. I just, I, I'm just needing, um, to be a lot more clear about the al- alternates because I feel like the alternates are, seem different almost every time. And I, I'm, I'm getting a little, I'm getting a little, um, flipped up about it, switched up about it. So, I know that there was a present, our last presentation seemed to be very clear. Um, and I would love, I just, I just need a little bit more clarity, that's all. But the, um, I do appreciate what you've laid out and how we're moving forward with it. I just, just is a, it's just a little confusing, that's all. I love to see it laid out in a way consistent every time we get, every time we get more information about this, this process and the bids and all of the alternates, like that, that's consistent, that's all. Thanks.
Can I, can I ask, are you confused with regard to clarity of scope for the alternates or cost?
Cost.
Okay.
The, the, the only thing with the cost is, obviously, we, we have, we, we, I apologize to begin hearing my connection isn't great, but we, we have some bids and some budgets and then it's more bids and fewer budgets. That, that, that's the reason it kind of changes. So now what we're presenting today, there are no more contractors' costs to bid. We have every single thing as bid. There's no more budgets plugged, which is why, because we were looking to award the electrical tonight. That's why it changed from last month, is we have true electrical numbers.
Well, Josh, we have one more bid next month with asbestos. It's kind of.
Abate, but that, yeah, correct.
That's separate, that's separate. That's not being beat out by, that's not being beat out by Pepper or FGM. We're doing it internally. That's, that's Jeff and, uh, Brad beating that out internally.
That is part of your owner's soft costs and would not be part of these construction cost numbers.
It is not, it's, it's not, it won't take the full balance up, we budgeted for it as well.
Yeah, the abatement is in the budget.
Can I, up, Sarah?
Yes, Tom.
Can I, I just, I, I, I want to say something because to, to, to Ron in response, um, again, I'll be, I don't really care if it's pepper or whatever. I care about what is OPRF's dollars. So when we had a presentation earlier, I had asked questions and it was, there was a difference and it's like, oh, well, that's just, you know, we weren't including things that we were doing ourselves. I, I really think from, from a, from my perspective, I want to know total dollars. So if it's, if it's we're doing it ourselves, if it's being done through our partners, et cetera, it, that's, they're, that, those dollars are still green and there's still money you put in the bank. So that's the perspective that I want to see. And I'm one seventh, but again, others can speak up.
Tom, the only thing with the abatement is, although you're right, Pepper is not doing it with the asbestos, is you won't have the final numbers till twenty twenty-three.
And it, and, and I realize it's not a big number in the big scheme of things and my point was really related to another discussion that was had where again, it was, this is the pepper, pepper bid and it was, we showed a big gap and the reason was because we weren't including things that we were doing ourselves. And that is not painting, again, from a scope and perspective, it's not painting the picture. I mean, this is about.
Yes, those, those, when I indicate soft costs I mentioned earlier, all of those things that you're doing yourself are included as a number in that highlighted yellow number you're seeing. They're just not final. So there's an allowance that has been put into there for anticipated cost for a number of different things that will happen along the way. So it's not an over and above what you're seeing there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Questions from others?
I have just an observation if I can make, uh, real briefly, is that the, um, the resources we have obviously are finite. If we could do all of this, you know, and have this work and make financial sense, I think we would. To me, it's a matter of priority and my priority would be more towards more classrooms than to extending the balcony. And so it seems like we could do, you know, eight or ten more classrooms instead of the balcony um, and, and have that be where we maybe do twenty classrooms instead of ten, just to use round numbers. And so um, that's just where I'm at. I'm not sure where other board members are at, but that is a direction that would be helpful for us to give. Again, I'm one seventh, but that's, that's where I am. I, I think the balcony, it's a terrific concept and would be lovely, but, um, again, it would be after having additional classrooms that we incorporate. If, if we even have the, uh, the desire to do as many classrooms as say fifteen or twenty uh, to, to bake back into that we've pulled out based on our budgetary concerns.
Matt, Josh, Josh from FGM, if I could give a, a counterpoint that might help with the balcony extension and, and the classrooms, because that, the point you made is a great one. And that, that has not been lost on, on, on the design team at all. The, the classrooms that are alternates already exist as classrooms and they can be arguably can be renovated at any time. The work happening in what the space that's going to transform into the student commons is happening next summer and if the balcony extension is decided not to occur when that work is done, the district would probably be hard pressed to go back into that space after the renovation is done, tear it up again to do that balcony extension. So I, I, I think, I think that's important. I think it's an important counterpoint just to, to put out there because we're, we're with you. Classrooms are sacred and, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it, it puts the, it certainly puts the district and the Board of Education in a tough spot. It's not an easy decision by, by any stretch.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, Josh. That's a good point and, and an important one. If you could give me a sense, or if someone could, of what kind of difference in balcony seating capacity we would have without the extension and with?
Sure, great, great question. Sure. Great, great question. So, so depending on how that, that balcony extension is used, as Allison described, the many, many different ways it could be used throughout the course of the day. You're, you're talking about 30 to 40 students, depending on the uses. So if it, if it flexed from a, from a informal classroom to being used as breakout space for small group learning, for gathering, for, for students hanging out. I mean, really, that's, that's one of the key kind of neat things with the student commons is that this idea that when school ends, that students would have a place to remain and not be forced out of the school. So, so essentially 30, 30 to 40, 30 to 40 additional students.
Yeah, but from like, would it be 60 as a base or 100? I'm just trying to get a sense of scale of what percentage increase overall this would mean for that area overall.
Sure. So, so on the, on the second floor, on the second floor, it would be, um, it would be an increase of, of approximately 50% on, on the second floor, because as someone, as someone noticed when, when looking at that video rendering, the other space that would remain if, if the district decided just to go with the base bid is really kind of a circulation space. So you're limited on how much furniture you can put in that circulation space from a fire codes perspective. And that, that balcony extension really creates a special place where you can land a lot of furniture. You can land more students. So.
Okay. Thank you. It's all helpful.
Sure.
And also to note, the recommendations that were included by the district here for alternates to accept were just based on what we, that was felt could be presented as reasonable with the budget that was, that, that was there. Um, and not taking too much out of capital improvements and not touching fund balance. But the board is welcome to make, to decide to do, to take all of them should they, should they choose to. Whatever combination is, um, is in your desire, the, the board can obviously do.
Or to take none of them and to bank, to bank the variance, the positive variance. That's a, that's an alternative also.
I, I think, um, Mr. Martyry was also trying to make a comment. I saw his box line up.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Dr. Prudad. So I just have a quick question for Dr. Anderson. So when you made your presentation, part of your argument was for the balcony space was that it's a great equity addition, right? It's, it serves some real equity needs in the school. So I guess from an evaluation standpoint, with your equity lens as what you're going to be focusing through, would it be better to get this balcony done? And if we don't get it done, I guess the understanding is we lose that opportunity. Or to lose that opportunity and fast forward some of the work on other classrooms. From an equity standpoint, what do you feel would be better? Or was that discussion had at the team level for the facilities management folks?
I would discuss at the team level for, um, it's chair committee. Because a lot, a lot of our clubs and, and students that, that, um, that wants to participate in after school activities and things like that, um, this is, this will benefit them. Um, Dr. Dr. Amos, can you, can you expand on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, when we think about the, the spaces and the, and the, can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Yeah. When we, when we think about, uh, these spaces from an equity perspective, right? And the, the sense of the need for a sense of belonging for our students. Um, this is a very important piece for our students in terms, especially our, our black and brown students in terms of them feeling like they are a part of the school. Uh, we can look at our, you know, our opt-in and opt-out, uh, demographic breakdown. And, and even see, you know, uh, beyond what the concerns are with, with COVID. Uh, that there may be some questions around just overall sense of belonging for students of color. So the more we can, uh, present spaces, uh, that can, uh, you know, position students to feel that sense of belonging. Uh, that'll go a long way, not only for them being in the building, but also, uh, being tethered to the school in a way that can a, assist with academic achievement. So, um, again, I think these spaces are, are critical for, for students of color, uh, to be connected to the school and, and, and really change the experience for students of color.
So, so from your internal evaluation, using your equity lens, and I'm assuming applying the, the equity tool you've developed, you prioritize the construction of this balcony as something that would really further the district's equity goals, particularly when it comes to its black and brown students, correct?
Correct. Especially when we talk about the, the racial equity policy as well and what we need to, uh, put in place to have a welcoming school environment.
Right. So, so when compared to, to Matt's question, where would it be, would it be better off for our student population, et cetera, et cetera, to just never be able to do this balcony project, but instead do another 10 classrooms for roughly the same cause? The answer is, well, then we completely lose the opportunity for this balcony in reality, from a practical standpoint. We always, we, we still have the capacity to fix up those classrooms down the road. But if we make this investment now in the balcony space, we will be taking a step forward from an equity standpoint, and hence we will be sort of changing our resource allocation to actually invest in our equity policy as this board has said it desires to do. My, I'm just trying to get it right. Is that right? Or am I getting anything wrong?
That makes sense.
I would, I would agree with that. Absolutely.
So.
Thank you.
Sarah, can I, eh, come back in here?
Sure. Let me just check and make sure that we don't have Jackie. I think is the only one who hasn't spoken yet, and I can't see. So I'm not sure if she's been trying to.
I have tried to. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, uh, it will be brief because, um, I, the things that, uh, Tom and Gina brought up about um, some continuity and kind of standardizing how we're, um, looking at this, I would also find that very helpful. Um, and this has been confusing having to recall, um, the 2017 budget and what we said then and, and as opposed to everything being in one place. Um, and also just, um, would hope, and, uh, I hope this comes out right, but it's, it's a little hard to, um, continue to, uh, hear that, well, this was done before we started. And, um, I'm, I'm trying to feel that, that team approach that we're all in this now and you know, it's kind of like you've been here for a couple of years, let's own it. And whatever we have to do as opposed to, um, you know, the apples to oranges comparison based on that was done before I got here. It, it just, it throws off the, the conversation. And also feels like us them as opposed to we're working together to, to figure this out. So that would just be uh, something that I think would be helpful because it, every time it happens, it, it makes me think that it's our responsibility to go back and figure things out when all of us, you know, when you all have worked on this, uh, together and are presenting it together. Um, and then in terms of, um, I'm struggling a little bit with, um, the idea of alternates. And I think what Ralph just illuminated is part of the reason why I, I don't get a sense of what the administration is, um, and our students and our, our staff from a student learning and wellbeing perspective, what you all are recommending. Um, it's been recommended from a, you know, kind of a facilities perspective. But, um, these types of proposals coming forward, I, it would be helpful to, to have a sense of, you know, where does this align with our equity issues and what is best for our students and what do we, you know, what do you all see that we need? And, um, yeah, classrooms are premium, but is that the model that we want to follow? Are, is that our, you know, reimagining education, um, from all the things that we've talked about? Not just, uh, a racial equity perspective, but students, all of our students, um, learning wellbeing. So I, it would be helpful to, to have that, um, as a part of this. And I continue to, to feel, uh, not rushed, but kind of pressured, um, to approve one part when it's, you know, like the electrical bid this evening and not really knowing what the complete story is. So it makes it, uh, a little more stressful than hopefully it has to be in the future.
Thank you, Jackie. I don't know if the administration wants to respond or if Craig wants to go.
There was a, a recommendation. Ron and Mr. Anderson, if you want to share what was being recommended as the.
We'd recommend in option number five and six D. And what we do, what we do before we bring it to the board, we have operations committee meeting to, to, um, to speak it over. After the operations committee meeting, we have a chair committee that, that consists of, of all of the, um, administrations. And we invite, we invite, um, a board member. I think, I think Craig is on the chair committee. Um, and we bring, then we bring it to the, then we bring it to the board after, after, and defeat upon what to select and why to select it. We bring it to the board for discussion to account. Then we, then we take it to the board for approval at the board meeting. At this point, we, 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 we want to have your, your, um, constructive input to, before we bring it to the board meeting.
Right. But I guess my question was, um, there was a recommendation. And if, you know, and you said the, the number, if you would speak to specifically what that recommendation is.
Oh, the recommendation is to accept, be it, um, to accept alter number five, which is the balcony extension and alter number six, which, which is the eight additional classroom. Those are two, um, things that we pull out because we were, we were scared that the bid was come, coming over and we don't want to be stuck with it. So we put those out just for safety net. So we, we would like to put those back into the, the project.
And I think that, thank you, uh, Mr. Anderson, but I, that's part of my struggle is that, um, how, you know, this is a, a big project. It has long-term impact. Uh, and the, I, I'm just trying to get a sense of if these are priorities and something that, um, we feel is, is needed in the best interest of our students, pulling it out um, to make sure that, you know, there's some budgetary concern in, in your words, you know, scared that we go over budget. It, it just, it's hard to know what the priorities are and how we're looking at this, um, this whole picture. Because if it is, you know, if it, if it advances our, um, our goals and around equity and student success and wellbeing and welcoming environment, I think we have to state that strongly. And I'm, I'm struggling with, and this is not directed at you, Mr. Anderson, but just this kind of dynamic between, um, the board and the construction company and the administration, when we have these discussions that, um, what, I'm, I'm not quite sure what is needed to be heard from the board in terms of that overarching idea of equity and student wellbeing. And that's driving, you know, these considerations from a board standpoint. I, the, the board has talked about that. But it seems that when we get to this point, it's always, um, well, the board, you know, we didn't want to upset the board. And I'm, you didn't say that, but that is the feeling that I'm getting, that it, it turns into this, um, kind of tenuous space that we're in as opposed to being able to discuss this, the financial as well as the, um, the impact piece. And, uh, so it turns it into like two different conversations. So I just, I'm struggling with that a bit. And, you know, it predates you, Mr. Anderson. And I'm just trying to see how we can, um, talk about this in a way that doesn't feel as though the board is about to drop some hammer or, you know, that we're not all kind of understanding what, uh, what the goals are and that we can talk about those a little more openly.
Dr. Moore, part of, part of the, the, the alternates and part of the conversation, it's been framed up, I think, pretty well in terms of what, what are the priorities? I think the administration has weighed in with the recommendation uh, that we feel that a priority happens to be the balcony extension and those eight classrooms. Okay. So that's really the, the position of the administration. However, it's a financial decision. And the, the board can choose to, the good news is we're, we're under budget. And if the board chooses, we can, we can bank that under budget money and not accept either of those alternates. However, we felt that we wanted the boards, um, the board needed to be aware of what our decision-making was, how we got to this point, what scope was still being considered and what it would cost to bring that scope in. I think, um, the, the, the administration has a very clear recommendation, uh, and the board can, the board needs to decide. Well, the, every individual member of the board can weigh in on how they feel about that. I think that was the intention, is to really have this conversation. Not to, not to pressure anybody or have, have anyone, uh, feel like they're going to have to put the hammer down. Um, it's, it's a, it's a clear decision. I mean, it's a, it's a decision, but it's, it's not an easy decision. No, no question about it. Because how, how do you weigh, you know, half a million dollars on, uh, on an extension of a balcony versus a, you know, a dozen, eight or 10 classrooms? It's, it's, it's a matter of what your judgment is on that.
And, and, um, Mike, you're presenting that as an either or, and up until this point, I thought it was both and were what would be, uh, you know, if there had been concerns about going over budget, both of those items would have been in the budget. So I, I, and I'm not, I don't want to, uh, quibble. I, I just will say that, you know, we're probably 30 minutes into this conversation. And, um, I just was struggling with clarity around, um, you know, um, what you felt was a clear recommendation from the administration and the rationale for. I feel like we just got to that and it, it wasn't clear to me prior. Maybe that is just me, but that's what I was trying to convey as well. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, did you have a comment you wanted to raise?
I still have a couple, a, a couple of follow-up things. So I guess I want to go back to what Ralph was saying and I, I understand the logic, but um, one of the things that we've always talked about is is evidence-based practices. And I guess I'm worried, me, now I have lots of biases and let's just, you know, be straight that I understand that. But is creating space for 40 people to hang out in the second floor, what is the evidence-based practice that that is improving equity? I, I, I just, I, I'm just asking that as a simple question. How do we equate those beyond just saying it?
There's research that shows that when students, regardless of their race, so let me say that, feel a connection to an environment, that they feel that they, they belong, they are understood and they are accepted for who they are. They actually, it improves their attendance. Um, it lowers their stress level, the level of anxiety that they have about the environment that they're, they're in and helps to improve their performance academically. That's one of the, one of the, that's not all of the research that shows, but that's one key factor in research.
Okay. I'd like to also add to that, Craig, that, um, in some ways, what, what we're doing here is responding to the results that we had from, uh, the student focus groups and surveys and, and, and stuff we did as part of the Imagine process. Uh, where they talked about, you know, the need for spaces, uh, for them to feel exactly like Dr. Prudad's described. And I, I want to say one, uh, additional piece to this that, um, I think that we, and I realize, you know, you're kind of framing a, a conversation there, but I think that we should kind of expand the notion of this as a place for kids to hang out, right? Um, we kind of can get into, and I, it's not really how I see this overall conversation unfolding, but we can easily get into in conversations about construction I have and, and other conversations we've had about this, a false binary between instructional spaces in a building and those spaces that are not instructional spaces. And that's not really how schools, um, work as we think about all of the programming that goes in to educate our kids. And so the spaces that we see as more flexible, as, uh, multi-use, um, the Learning Stir is an example, right away from the beginning of this program. Uh, those are spaces where learning is designed to occur. So, um, the, the space is, is designed for that. Um, and I think if we use a broader definition of the type, of the type of learning that we're talking about, um, as well as the traditional definition of kind of classroom-based learning, uh, this space has, has utility for that.
Craig, I want to add to that. Uh, if you were to go through pre, pre-pandemic, if you were to walk through the gallery that we have now at any period of the day, you would see students there studying? At any period of the day, you would see students there studying. Um, their Chromebooks would be open, they would be, they would be working. So as, as Greg indicated, it is an extension of a learning space.
And we are increasingly with, with projects that we do across, not just FGM, but in general um, educate. Architects that work in K-12 education, designing spaces that build um, breakout spaces like this. Into the, into the circulation and open spaces of a school because twenty-first century learning is moving in that direction. So this is one of the places that we saw an opportunity to do this for you.
Okay, so I am much more comfortable with the way you articulated it, Dr. Pruitt-Adams. The, because I, I see it, I see the issues and the, the way that you laid it out, I agree with you, that those spaces are better that way. I fear that we wave an equity wand over that. Uh, inappropriately. It, it's the right decision, but that's not the basis, in my opinion, my sole opinion, that's not the basis. The basis is, it's a better, it, it's a better space for education. It's a better space for a lot of things that makes the kids more comfortable. Uh, that's, these are just my opinions, so that's, uh, that, that's that. And then I'll just end with two things, Mike said, and I wouldn't say it, but Mike said it several times. You know, we're going to bank the over budget, the, the under budget, we're not under budget. And I think we've got a lot of these spaces in the Program One design, not just this balcony. So I'm done.
Thanks, Craig. Do we have any other board members who wanted to ask questions or raise other issues?
Sarah.
I, I just wanted to um, just circle and, you know, I um. I appreciate uh, Craig, how you uh, laid this out and I, I know that this is um, an issue that you are. Um, it feels that you're attempting to, to not uh, be confrontational or to feel confronted. So I am going to do my best to just weigh in, in terms of um. The, the comment about the equity wand. Um, I, I have never um, imagined that our equity work would be painted in a way that um, is. I, I just am, I'm struggling with um, all of the rationales that we've put forward. And all of the listening that we did to our students and the um, the, the research that's out there. And the, the equity piece, in my opinion, has to do with the fact that um, our uh, black and brown students, our low-income students. And there's definitely some intersection there, are, have been the, the, the students who have not been as connected or have a space. Um, at our school to be able to study. Um, if they're, you know, they don't have tutors, they're not, they can't go straight home. And that was why um, even, you know, years ago, as we started talking about this. The, you know, pouring of students to the library, our students. And asking them, you know, I, you know, asking them, what's, you know, are you in any after-school activities extra-curricular? And the days that they weren't, or if they weren't at all, they weren't, they didn't have a space and so the library became the only space. And that troubled me um, as a board member and as a community member, just from the standpoint of. We have all these resources, how do we make sure we're taking care of the needs of, of our, all of our students? So that's the equity piece from my perspective, is that those that um, did not have the resources or the, the space for studying. Or for um, you know, having some time um, to congregate um, and be social with friends in a safe space. Is part of our uh, responsibility and. I just, I just had to, to put that piece in because it, it, I didn't want that to be forgotten, that this was our student voice and input that. Helped us to arrive at this decision.
Okay, and Jackie, I understand that, I, I appreciate that input and I think you're right. And I think, you know, that, that is my own bias a little bit, be showing, and you're right, those spaces are needed. And, and my only thought is, you know, we, we have a lot of them as a community, we've been trying to invest in them, maybe we want to invest in this one too. Okay, but, but thank you, I mean, I, my blind spot to, to, to put it out there that way.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Add one thing too, because what, we made a commitment about, um, we signed a racial equity policy into, we, we put a racial equity policy into place. That said that we would use an equity lens for all of our decision-making processes. So I think that as um, I believe it was Ralph maybe said it, um, as, as Jackie just said. Like, I think that us making sure that we have an equity lens on all of these decisions is critical. Um, and knowing the impact, the full impact of, of what um, what our decisions are on all of our students is, is including. And of course, our students of color. Um, I also wanted to say that um, I really appreciated how um, Dr. Pruitt-Adams and, and Mr. Johnson explained. The um, how, how, how the, how the functionality of the spaces. And I know that we get the numbers and the reports and I think that an inclusion of some of that explanation as we're. Looking over these financial reports might be helpful as well.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, actually, and Gina's comment kind of touched on, on part of what I was going to say, layering back to, you know. I, I, I agree, we've made a commitment to look at things through a, an equity lens and what my, you know, my void here is. What are we, you know, we, I, I think I would like to see what that looks like, you know, what the, rather than just saying it. We need to see how it went through that process, to which point we got that recommendation, that's the commitment. And I'm all in favor of it, but um, it, it's, it's presenting it in a way in, in that context. That's, that's regarding the discussion on the balcony, my, so, so that would be an ask is, is. How, what did it look like as we put it through our equity lens? Because there's a tool and I'm assuming that if we do it through a tool, we can, we can start learning how, how we're making those decisions. The second question I have for an ask is um, did, a technical one, going back. Um, I, you know, the, these different transfers, I understand the um, issue associated with the grant, et cetera. The um, HLS to CIP transfer. Um, I, I'm still, you know, not clear on, but I, I don't know how to get it into question without getting all kind, you know. It, it still means we're spending extra money coming, coming out of our fund balance, is that correct or not?
No, we, we spent, well, you're taking one that already budgeted in one budget and transferred it to another budget to, to um, cancel them out. So, so, so you're taking seven, seven hundred thousand dollars for one budget that's already, is already allocated. And you're putting it inside of another budget to, to um, take away the negative. So we're not, it's, it's, it's not coming out of another budget other than the ones that's already allocated.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Sure, um, so I, I really don't have much to add, I do appreciate Ralph asking a question about the, the equity. Um, the equity lens for the balcony project and I feel like we probably should have started with that in the initial presentation. Um, because it's really helpful in terms of our being able to better prioritize. Uh, and Dr. Ammons, who I can't see, I don't know why, I have like only four of you in front of me right now and I can't figure out how to get everyone back. Um, but Dr. Ammons, of course, has a tool that he developed and has been using. And so I'm wondering if as we're going through some of these facilities conversations, if we can't, um, to Tom's point. Uh, begin to sort of implement that tool a little bit more transparently to the board so that we have a better understanding of, of how these. Various recommendations are coming forward and how they're impacting our students directly.
Sure, and we can, and we can do that.
Yeah, I think that might be helpful. All right, thank you so much for the presentation.
Um, Sarah, I'm sorry, I, I had a question that arose, it, it's a layman's question that is asking for a technical answer. That hopefully can be provided in a layman's way. Trying to understand how it is, it just seems pricey. To me, to my layman's eyes, for half a million dollars for a space that seems simple and, and has thirty or four spaces, that's open space anyway. So can someone explain to me, because if, if I'm going to support that element, I want to really understand why it costs so much. And that, yeah, and, and I'm sure there's an answer, and, but just for the sake of brevity or simplicity, if there's a way someone can break it down for me real simple, that'd be great.
I can provide some feedback on that. Um, the balcony extension is an overhang that was not there before. And so there's a significant amount of structural work and reinforcing of the beams above to hang. We're hanging it essentially and there's um, reinforcement that needs to happen on beams that were not designed to carry that. And so, and then there's sort of destructive work to get up there and do that work and um, and also into, off to the side to make sure that we're, that it's. Um, supported the way that it needs to be and then you have to go back and patch that work. So that, there is some impact in adjacent spaces along with much of the cost is structural.
Got it, thank you, that, even I got that, so those are well done.
No problem.
And Sarah, I just have one quick little add-on.
Yes, I'm, I'm hopeful that this is probably about our last question, guys.
It's, it's more of an encapsulation because I actually think tonight's presentation was a good faith presentation by the administration. Even though I agree with Craig and, and Tom and Jackie and Gina's comments that the, the data could be presented in a little more user-friendly way. Um, I, I, I know that all these items that are now add-ons or whatever were in the original scope. And I know they got taken out because the board wanted to start controlling the budget. And part of that desire from the board to want to control the budget a little tighter. Came from a misunderstanding over the basement and the build-out of the basement and the cost of the basement and whether or not that was ever approved. So there were some issues that arose between the administration and the board over the basement, I think legitimately. That then caused the board to ask the administration to come back, take some things out of the budget. And give us a presentation tied around the finances in a little tighter way. So they did that. And then when the actual bids came in, they said, well, these things were in the initial scope of the work anyway, they're now called alternates. But they were in the original scope and we feel from an equity lens and other standpoint, although it could have been explained better, I agree. With, these should be prioritized as being added back in rather than just saving the money. So I think all of that was done responsive to board requests. It may be not as clear as board members would like, but I think it's in the spirit of developing a more collaborative approach dealing with this process. And I appreciated that. Now, going forward, obviously, I would like to see the way this stuff is presented a lot cleaner and tighter and all that other stuff. But I also want to ensure that we keep going forward in this more collaborative way. Where we're working together as a team to try to make investments that are in the best interest of our students. That's really why we're all here. So I just wanted to thank the administration, big picture, and say that this discussion was actually a good, robust discussion. And the kind of thoughtful discussion we should have over prioritizing resource allocation.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to get to the administration for the presentation, um, Dr. Pruitt-Adams, I think. Oh, I was looking at a different schedule, so now we, we're on to D, somehow I have these flipped in my other, uh, video I was looking at, um, approval of network purchasing quotes.
Right, uh, this item is for discussion. Making the presentation is Mr. Christopher Thame, Executive Director of Educational Technology. Mr. A.K. Kamani, Director of Infrastructure Services and Sindicador, Chief Financial Officer. At the conclusion of the presentation, it is recommended that pending the review of contracts and inclusion of additional licensing details. And cost in the current open RFP, we're requesting that the committee, the whole review and recommend the purchase of network hardware and licensing. Total one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And move forward to the Board of Education for approval at its regular board meeting on February the twenty-fifth. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and District Policy Four colon ten. Mr. Thame.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt-Adams, uh, good evening, board. Um, we have uh, come yearly uh, with the E-rate items, uh, there's a timeline that's involved in. Uh, having this uh, submitted in time for the grant. Um, these are network infrastructure costs and network items that uh, we need to upgrade. Uh, on a regular basis to ensure stability within our network infrastructure. And by doing it along this timeline, we're uh, able, able to take advantage of a E-rate percentage. Uh, grant that is applied to the total cost. And uh, I am uh, very thankful and grateful to have um, a partner through it this year. Uh, Dr. Kamani um, has come on as our Director of Infrastructure Systems. And I'd like to turn this over to him as he explains um, what you're looking at in more detail.
Good evening, everyone, I'm, I'm A.K. First time presenting before you, it's a pleasure to meet everyone. Um, so what I like to do is first start off by um, kind of walk into the process a little bit of, of what was involved and what we evaluated. Um, this is a category two E-rate funding um, for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-two. Um, we looked at, we, we received uh, several um, proposals from um, various vendors. For the network infrastructure and hardware that we're looking to replace. We looked at ForteGate, uh, and just to pro, provide a little bit of background on, you know, our current environment. We have a five-year-old Palo Alto firewall, uh, it's reached its end of life. So we're looking at um, ForteGate, which is a next-gen firewall. Um, and what that means is it provides us uh, better security and also it comes at a reduced cost savings for us. Uh, which is um, what we'll talk about in the proposal.
Uh, one thing, yeah, I'm going to note a couple of things, number one, uh, there was a mistake. Uh, we uh, used the wrong evaluation here, the outcome uh, was the same for the company, for the company and the vendor that we were going with. But if you notice that there was zero on the cost eligibility column, that was not intentional. And we'll have that fixed when we have the packet uh, together for the regular board meeting. Um, any changes that we will, we will note in uh, the cover letter, so when you receive that. Any differences between what you're seeing now and what you're seeing then, um, will be very clear to you and very succinct. Uh, I also wanted to briefly uh, just explain this table, this is the hardware eligibility matrix. And uh, one additional uh, confusing point uh, is the um, percentage of eligibility that's involved. We have an E-rate consultant that we work with uh, that helps us determine um, that various, the, various items. Are not a hundred percent eligible for E-rate, but they are, and they do have a proportion of it. So in this case, the total cost for this particular line, we've got thirty-eight, eight eighty-eight. Fifty-nine percent of that is eligible. We are able to retrieve forty percent of that fifty-nine percent. And so that's why if you're looking at that cover letter and you're looking at the E-rate savings and the eligible cost. It's not a direct forty percent um, of the uh, eleven, one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. So I did want to clarify that and that's what, why the metric is presented so that that's clearly indicating. Which of those line items are a hundred percent and which have some other uh, degree of eligibility percentage on them. And then finally, um, the firewall is the barrier. Um, it is the uh, fortification between our network and the outside world. And it also includes a lot of inside security as well. And so that, it is very important that not only are we looking at something that is very cost-effective, which Fortinet is. Um, but also something that has an industry uh, respect. We've watched this company come up uh, over the, I, I've watched them develop over the past five years or plus. Palo Alto has been an industry standard and continues to be an industry standard, it's an excellent firewall. Uh, Fortinet has really uh, gotten aggressive, not only in their product and what it's capable of. Is, and, and how people are reacting to uh, the security measures that are coming with their appliances. But also uh, they've become very aggressive in pricing. And as a result, uh, that's why we are looking to make a change in that arena. So um, one last thing, there was a, a note in there that there is um, an item that is still being reviewed and I wanted to highlight that so you. and I wanted to highlight that so you recognize that there's a difference there. The Mobility Master, this is a licensing item that is still under review, under a force, under an RFP request for proposal. We're at the, coming to the end of that, that ends February 14th. And any change to this particular cost, the 7,877, will be reflected in the packet that comes to the regular board meeting. And I think, A.K., am I missing anything?
And then the UPS.
Oh, right. Yeah, and fixing the UPS. What have that cost eligibility column fixed to? Any questions, folks?
Thank you. Do we have questions from board members?
Yes. Yeah, yes. Thank you, Chris and A.K. Question I have is how, it was mentioned that there are, you know, there, we're seeing some downward movement in some costs. How does this relate to historical costs? And I, and you know, I know we're, we spend money in this every year, but it's not always apples to apples, correct?
Right, correct.
So I'm just trying to get a sense on whether, you know, we're seeing what the direction is in terms of total cost, whether we're adding scope and maintaining cost or what's going on there.
We're adding scope and maintaining cost. We're seeing pretty much status quo on your, your wireless infrastructure items are coming in at prices that we would expect. Where we're really seeing a savings, we're basically able to get a redundant firewall in the, below the cost of the single firewall appliance that we had prior. Now, the reliance on that firewall has increased since we bought it, especially with the implementation of the VoIP services. Our entire telephone system is reliant on our network. So we are increasing our capability, our redundancy and our reliability and maintaining the cost and actually bringing it down a bit in the, in the arena of the firewall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from others? No? All right. Thank you both very much for your presentation.
That's the last item we have, and now we're at future agenda items.
Suggestions for future agenda items from board members?
Sarah, I just had a question for future. In terms of follow-up on superintendent goals that were, I believe there were some that had a February
Yes.
date. So are we going to see them at the regular board meeting or how's that work?
That's scheduled, it was our understanding that whenever those were done, they needed to be at the regular board meeting. And so it is scheduled for the 25th.
Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to throw one out there. I, I think before the end of the year, and certainly actually sooner rather than later, there should be some feedback on how hybrid learning is going. And there should be some discussion about potentially, if necessary, what a hybrid plan or the expansion of that hybrid plan might look like for the fall. So I'm not saying that that will happen in the fall, but I'm saying that one of the challenges is getting way ahead of this. And that needs to start sooner rather than later. I'd like it to come back to the board with some discussion for us to give some direction and what our thoughts are.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and if I could actually pile on to that one, I mean, I, I fully agree with that, but I would even add to it. It's really an assessment of the remote, the remote learning situation and with, with student feedback on what, you know, what will, what changes in school and how we do school might make sense. And it's a big, big meaty question, but you know, now that we, now that it's fresh to learn from the multitude of changes that were thrust upon us.
Got it.
Can I ask actually for some clarity on that just for a second? So, because I kind of hear two things, right, in what's being shared in the two comments. One is just an update, right, from what we presented in our report in December about how remote learning and how our students are doing. The second is what have we learned throughout this entire experience that will carry us forward with, with future learning environments, even post-pandemic? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm going to put it, I'm going to put it in this context. I can tell you that how, how we do work, okay, where I am, has changed dramatically. And post-pandemic, it is not going to look the same. There were some, there's been some, some fundamental structural difference and it will, it will be different. And, and, and so with school, I mean, there were a number of changes made in terms of the schedule, the length of class. I mean, you know more than I, but the world is different. And what can we learn from that?
Could I, I just want to add back in, my, my, my point is a subset of that, which is what are we going to do in the fall, which all due respect, Tom, I think is urgent versus a broader discussion.
I agree with you.
Thank you. Others? Okay, hearing nothing further, I, we still have another meeting, so don't get too excited, but I do move to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
You betcha.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, why don't we take a five-minute break and then come right back to the same Zoom and then open the special board meeting that we can go into closed session. See you back at like 8:33?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
To members of my team, I'm sorry, Chris, you have to stay. I think you, whoever's running it. But to other members of my team, other than Dr. Sanders, I think that after we break for closed session, you guys can go.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, looking at the agenda, is Hugo still going to be running it or or will you still have to be here, Chris, for that?
I'll check in with Hugo. If I drop off, it means he's sticking around.
Okay, Greg, you don't have to stay either. And as other members show up, I'll let them know they don't have to stay. That's once we go out. Ron? Roxanna, we have to do closed session, but the other members of the team may leave after we go into closed session.
Okay, as board members come back, if they could just turn their cameras on so that I know that we're more or less ready to start, that'd be great.
Sarah, I'm back, but not right in front of my camera.
That's totally fine. I've got one.
I'm in front of my camera. Oh, that's right.
Oh, Ralph.
I need a haircut, is what I know, based on the camera.
I need it. So we're in the same boat, Tom. I'm going to turn my camera off because it's distracting how my hair is looking for me right now.
I'm right with you both. I'm going to have to work on mine, too.
All right, guys, I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting just because that part's slow and kind of a little bit boring. All right, so it's February 11, 2021. I'd like to call to order the special board meeting of the Oak Park River Forest High School Board of Education. It is currently 8:34 PM. As permitted by Prisker's executive orders, we are currently meeting virtually. And this meeting, of course, is immediately following our prior committee of the whole meeting. The public may attend this meeting via web's live stream on YouTube or via the link on our website. The State of Illinois continues to operate under disaster declaration related to the COVID-19 worldwide pandemic. The Health Department continues to advise the community to practice social distancing, wear masks, and avoid unnecessary contact with others. And based on these current health concerns, I, Sarah Spivey, as head of the public body, do not believe it's either practical or prudent to hold an in-person meeting of the board tonight. I further believe that it is neither practical nor prudent for the public to be present at our public meeting location. And we will continue to hold a remote meeting with the updated practices to comply with Governor Prisker's public acts. However, I would note that we do anticipate resuming some form of in, hybrid, frankly, in person and room, but some folks remote at our next board meeting on, I believe, the 25th of February, if I'm not mistaken. But there will be more information forthcoming about how that will work. We are not requiring that anyone be physically present who does not feel comfortable being physically present. So at this point, it's anticipated that public comment, for example, would be able to be both via email and, and/or in person, depending on capacity and room size, which we're still working on. So that being said, Gail, would you mind calling roll?
Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Dr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Baron?
Here.
Mr. Eisler?
Yes.
Mr. Martieri?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Dr., and Ms. Dixon Spivey, thank you.
I am here as well. Gail, do we have any, oh, no, we got closed session. All right, give me one sec. All right. I move that we enter closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointments. Employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district and independent contractors and specific volunteers, including hearing testimony and a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Is there a second?
Okay.
Can we have a roll call, please, Gail?
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Eisler?
Yes.
Mr. Martieri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris? Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
She's having some internet.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. And Ms. Dixon Spivey? Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so folks, those of you who are going to close session, the link should be in your email, and I will see you there shortly. All right, so folks, those of you who are going to closed session, the link should be in your email, and I will see you there shortly.
Second.
Are we motioning to adjourn, Tom?
Yeah, we're, someone was saying hit the speed button, I'm.
Motion to adjourn, so I think.
Yeah, we're already done. But when you go into closed session, do you have to enter, type in the meeting number and all that stuff?
Or you just copy paste it?
Yeah, I mean, but it isn't automatic. You have to manually do it, correct?
It's automatic for me. I just click join the meeting.
No, it's, that's a question I had. It's, for, for closed session, I always have to copy and paste it.
Two, Tom.
Yeah.
Same with you?
Yeah. Um, yeah.
So that's why, because this is, this shows that I'm a slower copier and paster than some of you other folks. But when it comes to just clicking, I'm pretty.
Oh, okay.
I'm a slick clicker.
Do you have Zoom, do you have Zoom downloaded on your computer?
Yes, I do.
Huh, because when I get the closed session link from Gail where it says join the meeting, I just click on it.
Ours isn't, ours isn't.
Yeah, me, too.
It doesn't say that. It doesn't say click to join.
Oh.
It, okay. We'll explore that.
All right, see? This is what we do.
Forty-three.
While you guys are all.
I know. Two minutes. We got, we got a forum.
Gail, that guy just behind you, this guy just was going down the scale behind you. You should have seen.
Yes. It is gorgeous.
Oh.
Craig, Craig might recognize that.
Do we have public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay, all right, then, our only action item is moving. So I move to present the personal recommendations, including transfers and retirements, as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please, Gail?
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Martyri? Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Martyri. Mr. Martyri, did you respond?
He just went out. I think he lost his audio or something.
Okay. Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Yes. Um, I'll text Ralph. Do we move to adjourn?
Second.
Yes.
Second. Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, guys, have a great weekend. Take care.
Bye.
Stay warm. Bye-bye.